Everyone rise. Here you hear you. If Hammond County Commission is now in session, the Honorable Howard Shipley presiding, please remain standing.
I'm going to call this special call meeting as the Hammond County legislative body to order, and at this time, let's go to the Lord and pray. Father, we are certainly grateful and thankful for your leadership and your guidance through this budget process. And as we meet here tonight, Father, to make the final decisions, give us wisdom and guidance, and may what we do be done for your honor and for your glory, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Goin moves. You lead us to our place.
Attention, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As Kirk, you begin the roll call, please. Jeff Aker?
Here.
Chris Ketchaw?
Here.
Randy DeBoer?
Here.
Thomas Dody?
Here.
Tim Goins?
Here.
Bobby Hahn?
Tim Warner?
Here.
Allyn Arndt-Wine?
Here.
Mike Reed?
Here.
Wayne Neesmith?
Here.
Howard Shipley?
Here.
Eleven presents, three actions.
We do have enough present.
Ten present, four action, I'm sorry.
Okay. We do have enough present to conduct business. At this time, we would entertain public comments regarding the budget. You can come to the platform, you'll have three minutes.
Mr. President, pass that at that whiteboard. We want to be very important. I'm not going to step up because I can't get up and down like I need to.
That's fine.
My name is Ed Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I would ask that you folks reconsider and do not pass yourselves or the commissioners elected to come into places that for you know last election in September, a raisin purse, it can be used somewhere else more effectively than giving pennies. Now, I know several months ago, Commissioner Ketchaw brought it up to give an increase as far as the chairman. But that money has a burden on Hammond County taxpayers that should not be. We burden heavy enough with property taxes and everything else tonight. Now, as you are well aware, by state law, if you vote against the new elected commissioners, we'll have no other thought except that except it. I for one will have had a way to dispose of that money with a donation of the last, because I don't feel like that anyone is entitled to it sitting around that page. I think it is a waste of taxpayers' money, and I think you folks should be good stewards. I think you should thank twice for the burdens placed on everyone in Hammond County. Now, some of you don't understand what I'm talking about, you're not old enough yet, that's fine. But some of our elderly ones have to make a decision between property taxes, taxes otherwise, and food for their children. So there is no excuse for it, no excuse whatsoever. No one merits a 25 percent pension unless it would be the Hammond County option. For that part, I would say that that's a high possibility because of the danger involved in their jobs. But you folks certainly don't deserve it. I wouldn't deserve it, I put myself in the same boat today. So I think you need to consider cycling and not vote yes on that part. You need to do the right thing. I know that you've taken our ways down the right path. That's the reason you have the list that I've hiked around to show you the highlights of your four years, but you just need to make it up. You need to be the good steward, and you need to be guided by the Lord. And the Lord's not born to tell you to burn. I said him senior citizen more than what you folks already know. You have the property tax claim, I'm booked tonight as well, so please, give it some thought. You should have done prayed about, you know what's coming. Please vote back.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? If not, then we'll proceed with our business. We have the first item, Resolution 22-13, fixing the tax levy in Hammond County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to the chair would entertain a motion?
Motion.
Okay. We have a motion, and second, did you get that?
I see.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, discussion, we call the roll. Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Dody?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Allyn Arndt-Wine?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
It's 10 days, zero days.
The motion passes. Next item is Resolution 22-14, making appropriations for the various department, institution, offices, agencies for Hammond County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023. The chair would entertain a motion?
Salute.
Okay. Commissioner Goin moves the second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Aker, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Dody?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Allyn Arndt-Wine?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stetson, sorry. That's nine days, one day.
The motion passes. Next item is Resolution 22-15, making appropriations to the nonprofit charitable and civic organizations of Hammond County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023. The chair would entertain a motion?
Salute.
Thomas Dody moves. We need a second.
Second.
Uh, Kim Warner seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, then call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Dody?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Allyn Arndt-Wine?
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Ten days, zero days.
The motion is approved. Next item is Resolution 22-16, joint resolution Hammond County, Tennessee, Hammond County Commission and Hammond County Board of Education, a joint resolution to approve a non-recurring one-time appropriation for fiscal year 2023 to fund non-recurring technology equipment. The chair would entertain a motion?
Salute.
Commissioner Goin moves. Commissioner Ketchaw second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jeff Aker?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Dody?
Yes.
Tim Goins?
Aye.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Allyn Arndt-Wine?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
It's ten days, zero days.
The motion is approved. At this time, we will entertain public comments on non-agenda items. You have three minutes. Anybody want to come to the voting? Yes.
I want to make a comment on senior citizens, on the senior citizen community center. They get $5,000 off every year, all of its fifteen. Why is it that the senior citizens don't get as much as I do? Is it because they haven't come and asked? I don't understand it. I mean, they're all alive. I never voted as senior citizen citizen, but I think it needs more money. So if you're going to give people more money, give it to the senior citizens, they deserve it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, I've got something I'd like to discuss real quick. There's no loaded up like that on this one. Two items. One, you've got a copy of the, uh, we have a privilege tax. Something we need to put straight toward, get this back, and put it straight toward the roads, the roads own. Anybody got any question about the tax? Everybody finally?
We cannot make a decision after we can discuss the tax.
Yeah, nothing could be, just kind of, our, our.
Can we lock this down?
Can? No, no, I was asking the same. We can, we can, but we can't deny it.
We can lock it down for future years, is what I'm saying.
Well, Mayor, do you want to explain about the future years?
It's limited on highest lock.
You can, it can be moved, let's say it can be moved to another fund or for another use, but you have to follow the same procedure, and that's two votes, two-thirds majority at two successive commission meetings, has to go through the same process, but it.
I personally think it'd be a great thing for the road to help us all, all the way around. Everybody, anything about the roads?
Did we get a, did we get a figure on what, what that would mean and suggested, like per dollar, what, what that brings?
It's $50,000 per dollar, so that would be a half million dollars.
Any more questions or discussion on that? Half a million dollars gets what? Yeah. But, but, we gotta have some, we gotta start somewhere.
Wayne wants to speak.
I'm for a wheel tax reform. It went through before.
Yes.
Couple years later, it all went against the road. It was put in general fund, to support the schools.
What I, what, what I'm saying is, how you gonna lock it in? If people vote on a referendum, me, I remember it 2001, when it ended, all I heard was, we're gonna do it for two years and it wasn't gonna take a dollar. And any areas out campaigning, if that come up, they gonna say, what about a wheel tax? It's still an issue out there. We didn't do what we said was going to back in 2001, and you get it locked in, where you can't, you can't do anything with it. I don't think the people's gonna vote for it. I don't see it.
Wait, wait, see, it is, you people are coming here as the next firm, for the rest, or want to put it in general fund or whatever, but you need to make sure it's stayed on the road. As the county commission issue, it needs to stay on the road.
If this, if the money before had stayed on the road, we wouldn't have the problem with the road. And that was 20 years later, we could have had all that money, but that, all of it, but a little of it, went to general fund, went to the schools, and I think that's when the county was in a crisis. But we short on money back in 2001, all up to 2006. In fact, we were pretty, we checked, we were pretty bad shape at that time. That's why we took the money out, opened the golfers' schools, where we didn't have the money to give them.
This shouldn't be taken out of the road.
Well, it shouldn't be, but you, how you gonna lock it in?
You can't lock it in, you're the one who's gonna have to vote it, stay, stay in the, on the road.
If nothing is locked in, we proved that a million times, on the 10-day rule, 10-day for a contract. Somebody brings it up, and somebody else makes a motion to cancel a 10-day rule. Why have a rule if you're not going to do it? And it's, this right here, we are real.
The one beauty of this is it takes two-thirds of the vote to do that, so you would need at least 10 to do that. And that's two each.
I understand that. I understand that.
So, I mean, I kind of, I don't know what we do, I don't know where the answer lies, but, I mean, do we, do you go back to property taxes? You gotta raise money somewhere to fix the road, it's $300,000 a mile. Now, according to what Mr. Polk told us, and, and we, we got, that's the biggest issue in our county. So what do you want to do? Do you want to raise property taxes?
Well, go ahead.
No, that's all I, Mr. Neesmith, I understand.
We had the wheel tax then, and then.
But later then?
Later, we come up with a property tax on top of that, besides the wheel tax.
This is a new commission. I mean, I keep telling you what happens after one.
The one that's gonna be around is the one that's gonna make it.
I agree with what you're saying.
And I think, and I do too, and I, but I think, I think all the commissions realize it's got to stay on the road, but it would be the, it would be the same with any tax increase or anything we give to taxes, it can be moved. Exactly. The only difference being is if we have it, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have it just coming out of the general fund, it only takes a majority. If we earmark this forward, it takes the.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds majority.
The, the, the wheel tax would take two-thirds.
Yeah, yeah. And if we just put it on the, out of general fund, then a majority could change it.
Like on, on property tax, eh?
Yes, yes.
So, so it comes down to, if we were to do this at some level, it would take two-thirds vote to change that.
If it made the strong.
And, and the commission that's coming in, the commission that's coming in realizes what we have before us, and, and this money is earmarked. So what I'm saying is, for the next four years, that would be safe, that'd be my guess, but I can't answer beyond that.
Hopefully it stays that way for.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the whole purpose of this discussion.
You know, if you go out there and talk to these people, third road, it's a big issue, third road. I'm not fronting that a lot, I'm doing it, busting tires, whatever. How are you gonna pay, how are we gonna pay for it? We've got to do something, and this is the best way that I know how, personally. Anybody got a better idea?
I think, I think it's a great tax, the wheel tax is, if you get people that's not even being citizens of the United States, might not own land in Hammond County, but they've all got two or three cars, you can get that money from them.
It's a user piece of.
It is. My only concern was, is this keeping it where it belongs. If it's for a wheel tax, to go for the, for the paving of our roads, I'll be torn. But I got, it's two-thirds, we're gonna have, I think we need to have a vote on it later to see if we want to do it, and then the vote, have it in there that this cannot be moved without the two-thirds majority vote.
That, that's on.
Had it, had it locked in.
Just locked in for that.
I mean, I think we're gonna have to. Some of these people that, you know, that, that wrote this up about the wheel tax, we did it once, two years later, they took it out, put it in general fund, and we never did get that money back. It's all been going for general fund, general fund, school, general fund.
I'll say that was a mistake that was done years ago, instead of.
We had no control.
If we didn't have any control over it, this is a new commission, we're.
Well.
I, I, I just, I'm looking for an answer too, that, that suits our county.
We've got, we've got to do something, 'cause this year's budget, this year's budget coming up, is like 1.3 million, that's gonna do 38 road, 38 miles. We got 400 miles of roads in Hammond County. It's gonna take 50 years before they ever get to my road, it's already taking 40.
Okay. This, this item will be on next month's agenda, and if you refer it to the general commission, uh, uh, it'll be on July's commission meeting, and also on August's commission meeting, because you're gonna have two budgets. So, you have the information before you think about between now and then, okay?
Are you looking at a refer?
No, we're looking at.
You're not looking at a refer?
Two-thirds vote. We have two-thirds vote.
Question. Do you exist in wheel tax, right there? Is it going to general fund?
Yes.
Can we not vote two-thirds vote, keep it out of the general fund?
You, you can, but you'll have to replace it by raising property taxes to replace.
One-fifty cents, man.
What's in the general fund. Mayor, uh, just estimate how much, uh, is in the general fund under the wheel property.
It's about one and a half million.
And what kind of a property tax would that take?
10 cents.
Oh.
10 cents.
10 cents. If it take 10 cents, property tax to replace it. And I agree, every bit of it should be, should be used for roads, but then we're gonna have to somewhere, you know, replace it.
It's gotta be balanced out. Mr. Chairman, have we discussed this? This is a problem that has to be widespread throughout the state. Have we discussed this with any other commissions to determine what they've done to address their roads?
I have, uh.
I, it, it, uh, I think, I talked to you with the Rogersville, that really bumped it up, like 70 dollars, 16 dollars, whatever it was. I, 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 don't, don't put me on wrong, I think it's wrong. Why not, a lot of everybody gone, excuse me, a bit, we're probably one of them.
I'm wondering if, if possibly the mayor of his office can come up with some options for us, some ideas, as far as funding at what level. We know 10 dollars is, I have maybe not. We, we have read that there's going to be a big surplus in the state budget if our local leaders could get some of that money for our roads, end up with them. Mayor, you want to answer his question?
Well, I'll be happy to, to prepare some options, um, like, for example, what Chairman Shipley just mentioned, our representatives, Representative Eldridge and Senator Sutherland introduced a bill this year in the legislature to give every county in Tennessee $2 million for roads, and it didn't pass, and, uh, five, it was whittled down to 500,000, and it didn't, it didn't go anywhere. But I'll be, yeah, I'll be happy to have some options.
Hard, how much, how much money have we got in our P P bank?
You have.
Many millions we got in there.
11.
Something like that, about 11 million.
11, indeed. How much are you supposed to keep? I know when Herbert was here, he was firm on that, keeping six or seven million, but now we're up to 11. Why can't you take some of that money out of that and go ahead and get a wheel, a road? Hey, the road right there?
You could, what's in the general fund, you could fund road maintenance with it. Now, this is a technical answer, you can't move it to another fund because it was generated in that fund, but you could pay for the roads out of the general fund. Uh, I mean, that could be an option, that'll be something that, you know, we can put on there.
Think of the wheel tax, the wheel tax to our strength of the road, that's continuous, you know, and that's what we need. So, once you get the road fixed, and then, you know, keep it fixed, you know?
Couldn't start day one bill and let that, that 27 dollars that the county gets, and goes for, it goes into wheel tax, and it goes for, for, uh, general fund, and goes in for school. The state's not gonna take this money for a year, on 51 dollars, 51 dollars for your license plates, the state's gonna not take 23 dollars of that.
Right.
The county's still gonna take 27 dollars. So that 23 dollars won't be ours until the state's got it. Now, when the state, next year, they say, hey, we want, we want that, we want that money, then take the 27 dollars and give all that towards your votes.
You're still gonna have to replace it though, in the general fund. The 27, the, the money generated by the 27 dollars that goes to the general fund, you'll still have to replace it, or make the cuts to, to equal a million and a half.
Do you remember why we, while we did that before, back, you and I, you probably stressed it in.
Right.
Do, do you remember why they took it? Took that money, that wheel tax money, and went to general fund, and went to schools with it?
I don't ever remember it going for roads. I, I, it started with schools and general fund, and then moved around some different levels, and then went to all general fund.
Privilege tax, didn't go for that.
Didn't go for roads.
And we misled, we misled the general public, when they voted for it, to go for a wheel tax, that's not the. I voted for it, I went for the wheel tax. They didn't, they wasn't upset about general fund or anything else.
They voted first for it because of education, because we, as educators, worked hard to get it, you know?
Hard did you say in a meeting that, that it, with the wheel tax, it all went into wheel tax for up to two years, and that's when they took it out and went to paying the schools?
No, it never did.
What was that comment you made about?
I said that part of it went, uh, to roads, not, okay, I was misunderstanding. Okay, anything else?
I have a question, if, and I asked Barry, I guess, if his funds was unlimbed, then how many miles would he do anyway?
What was it?
I didn't, I didn't get an answer.
So, would we get an aim though, that you would be more contracted services possible? Is that what?
I would.
Yes, right.
If he did, spend 50 million dollars and you only did four miles.
Right, we can't have that. And he always has money left over. He's a little bit reluctant to contract, that he can, thinks he can do it, the preparation is that.
But he's got to prove it to the law, I believe.
I know.
That should help.
I know Barry can't do so much with what he's got to do with it, but if all of you look inside the city limits, the city doesn't, they're not the paving business, they don't pay, they send these roads out for bids. I think we might be getting to the point, we need to send some roads out for bids, and give Barry some relief on it. I mean, Barry already is using those paving companies as if he's, he's side dressed them, getting them shoulders a little wider where he can get them live.
Does that touch the hem?
Yeah, that's his fault.
And he's the one that, if we get more money, we can do just like the city does, like, just like that Bay Walter Drive, Turkey Drive, East 3rd North Street, it all goes out for bids. We know how much it's gonna cost. Any word, okay?
How much it gonna cost to do East 3rd North Street?
Okay, one more item that, uh, we're just gonna discuss tonight, this is near and dear to my heart, had been, so yours, just, if you can get a grasp. I've got, uh, I'll get how to, how to, here, and I've read through it, it's pretty good. Metro Government, people, we are just too small of a county to have two government bodies. You can have one. One, that saves the people a lot of money out there. I have one government, we're duplicating everything, a lot more, I have, a lot. Trash truck over here on Parker Avenue, the very last house or two is in the county, the rest of them's in the city. So they got two dump trucks following each other out there, one was just getting, picking trash up at the end, and it, and it happened all over, not just there. It's like we're duplicating, we're wasting money, we're wasting dollars. So we need to think about, to study about, a metro government. Any question on that? Any thoughts on that?
I'd like to hear the, the frozen concrete, that it would be a, probably a sanction study to talk about, just as you said, to think that I think about the money, the United States money, I want to do this, I, I want what's best for our county, but when you think about the inside rating of the city.
what's best for our county. But when you think about the inside rating the city just now, and the money that they're generating, we're still, when you become Metro, you're gonna overtake, or you know, you're gonna combine it. You're still, your taxes may raise overall, to begin with. I could have been wrong in that, but my, my thinking is you could actually raise taxes to begin with.
I don't think so, we can't.
No, no, I got you. But that's why I would, I would sanction this study.
Well, what happens is, is if we decide to do that, C T A S employee gets, gives a lot of help with the bill on that, and we have to get a committee together to study it, and go forward with a little bit of time. Now, it's got, the county, the people in county come through it, gotta go to the people, gotta go to the city, gotta go to county commission. It's all got to prove with all that. And I heard it was one thousand up before, and they, they lowered it down because they, one person in it.
And really, I think that that's the decision that the new commission needs to discuss and make.
It will be.
And on that.
It's municipal government. There's already one, but it's, it's the school system. That's an end of the government. That's got, if the school's out of business, it's all ends in the county. That's, you've already got it on school.
And jail.
No, you don't have it on-
You don't see jail.
Jail, but you, you still got a sheriff's department, and you got a city police department.
That's why we take time.
That's where the fat comes right there.
Yep.
I think we need to study on it and see what is the pros and cons, and how that would affect our county. That, that wouldn't be an easy answer, to find out exactly how would-
Well, when they send out what we have to do, something like getting a lot of them sitting here, what we have to do is to figure out, yeah, things have come out.
Jim, correct me, it makes a lot of sense for Hamilton County to be in the open.
Take, read that. It'll be your responsibility.
I'll read it tonight.
A lot here to read. Do you have any, any more questions on that? Anything? Anybody?
If not, then we'll stand adjourned.